Vivian will join us when she can.
Here she is.
She's here.
All right. Welcome back, everyone. We're reconvening to conduct the following interviews in connection with Roanoke City School Board's upcoming vacancies effective July 1st, 2023. We'll be interviewing five applicants for consideration of two school board trustee positions commencing July 1st of this year for three-year terms of office each. Three interviews will be conducted today and two on Monday, April 17th. The five candidates are Elizabeth C.S. Jamison, Jacqueline W. Moon, Orlise Quintana, Christopher Link, and Natasha Saunders. The three candidates to be interviewed today are Jacqueline Moon, followed by Orlise Quintana, and then Christopher Link. Appointment of the two successful applicants will be determined at a subsequent council meeting. Each interview will be approximately 30 minutes and will entail the purpose for their willingness to serve on the school board and answering questions from each of us on council. Once the interview has been completed, the applicant may leave the chamber since no official action will be taken by the council today. And so I will now turn things over to our personnel chair, Councilwoman Trish White Void, to guide us through the interview process this afternoon.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. First of all, Ms. Moon, I want to say welcome and thank you so much for your interest in Roanoke City Public Schools and for your interest in the Roanoke City School Board. If you will come forward to the podium, my colleagues and I will ask you a series of questions. Actually, there are eight questions, and we will do them individually. And I will actually start with number one, and do not hesitate to ask us to repeat the question if you want clarity. And if you want a little pad or something, we can get that for you, some notes or something.
Sure.
Can we get her a pad? And while she's getting the pad for you, I'm sorry, we should have done that already, we weren't thinking ahead. If you would not mind telling us a little bit about yourself, so basically just introduce yourself, not only to this panel, but also to our viewers who are watching, you are Facebook Live.
Absolutely, my name is Jackie Moon, and I am not a Roanoke native, but I moved here in 1990 when I was nine years old. And went to Roanoke City Schools the entire time, Monterey Elementary, Breckenridge Middle School, Williams Fleming High School, graduated from Fleming with an IB certificate, several IB certificates. And then moved away, went into the Army for a while, then ended up back here with, and had my son. And so I raised my son here, he's 18 now, but he has been in the Roanoke City Schools since he was in pre-K at Crystal Spring. And he has gone through, and he's just about to graduate from Patrick Henry. And that is pretty much, that is pretty much it. Throughout his life as a child, I was always in the school, the classroom mom or the PTA. Kind of just, I was a single mom for most of his childhood, and so I would end up in the classroom kind of a lot, so.
So you are a product of Roanoke City Public Schools, and you now have a child in Roanoke City Public Schools.
Almost done with it, yes.
Almost done. Well, thank you so much for that brief introduction. Ms. McCoy went to get a pad for you and a pen, just so you'll be able to take some notes if you want to, and she's back already.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, just in case you want to take some notes or something, it might help you to write down the question or some things that come to mind, so you don't forget. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'll give you a second, and you just nod or let me know when you're ready.
Oh, I'm ready.
Are you ready? Okay, I will start with question number one, and it is, what are the different roles and responsibilities of school board and the superintendent? What are the different roles and responsibilities of the school board and the superintendent?
Well, as far as I understand it, the school board exists to educate the children, the students of Roanoke City. They're the ones that are in charge of figuring out how to best implement the education and how to create lifelong learners, how to make the schools work better for the children, for the community. And they are the ones that are in charge of hiring and selecting the superintendent, who is then over each individual school, making the decisions for the administration to follow in each individual school.
Okay.
Jackie, welcome.
Thank you.
I've got second question, which is, as you think about this work that you're doing, how will you build and sustain relationships with other school board members and the superintendent?
Well, I would maintain relationships with other school board members by communicating with them both in meetings and outside of meetings. Maybe collaborating with them when we have similar ideas that we're trying to work toward, or when we're trying to brainstorm different strategies. I imagine that there, that we would have pretty close communication if we're on the same committees, or even if we weren't on the same committees. And the superintendent, well, I don't really know how the communication works between the school board and the superintendent, but I would imagine that, that was the question you asked, right? So if I had to reach out to the superintendent, I would probably do that via email or a phone call at first, but if I wanted to have an audience with her, then I would set up a meeting and go and speak to her individually. Or with others in a group, I suppose. I guess it would depend on what the reason for that communication would be.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know it's like popcorn, we're not really going in order.
Before I do that, just for disclosure's sake, because Moon is such an odd name.
It is.
I just want to say, I'm not sure, I don't think we are related, but Moon is my maiden name.
Is it? Well, it is my married name.
Okay. That's all right, that's all I wanted to just clear the air on that.
I think that we were Monahan at one point.
Yeah, okay, no problem, just wanted to clear that I did not know you in that sense. My question for you is, why do you want to serve on the school board?
That's a very good question. I have always felt that education is the most important thing. I think that, I'm very concerned about the cycle of poverty and how things that happened to us in childhood end up shaping the adults that we become. And that ends up shaping the society that we have. And if you can break the cycle of poverty through education, then you change the world. And I think that, you know, in my prior life, I went to school to be an elementary teacher or administrator, that didn't happen. But I think that in other ways, by being a parent and raising my child, by being involved in the PTA and in his classrooms, and this maybe as the next logical step, by being involved in the public school system, it can help to shape these children before it's too late and help them get a good, solid education and break that cycle of poverty.
Thank you, I want to put some of the things you said on a poster, put them up on the walls in here. I have the longest question, so you have a lot of fun with that, and it's probably the most dense of them. The taxpayers invest a substantial amount of money in public education. What in your background would help assure them that you have some understanding of budgeting and accounting for such a large investment of public funds? Not ever yet. How do you see your role as a steward of these resources for the educational benefit of our students? It's really focused on the financing piece.
Okay, well, I've owned my own business since I, since 2004, and I'm a real estate appraiser. And in the course of that business, I have had to learn how to budget, how to file taxes for a self-employed person. I've, trial, by trial and error, have learned the right ways and wrong ways to manage money in that way. And so I think that that experience helps me understand how to best spend money, save money, and allocate it, and invest it. When it comes to the taxpayers' money, that's something that I would take, that I feel very strongly, is just a very important note because taxpayers are pretty, pretty particular about how their money is spent. And if they don't see results, or if they see something in the school system that isn't working, and they make their voices heard, and they're paying their taxes, and changes aren't being made, then I think they would be rightfully upset about that. And I think that the school board, or any city board, has a responsibility to use those funds wisely and carefully, and with the public's desires and intentions in mind as well. So, yeah.
That's good, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you so much, appreciate the answer.
Hi, thank you for coming in.
Hi, thank you.
So what do you see as a major challenge in Roanoke City Public Schools? And if you are appointed as a member of the school board, what will you do to address this challenge?
Well, at Patrick Henry High School, I'm the vice president this year of the PTSA at Patrick Henry High School. I've spent three of the four years either as president or vice president of PTSA. And through those years, I have seen that Patrick Henry has a large student population that is homeless, or is, or doesn't have the funding that they need for everyday items like clothing, food, undergarments. And I think that they slip through the cracks, and I think that it falls to the PTSA, in this case, to meet all of those needs, and we really can't meet them all. And so that is a frustration for the PTSA, but also a tragedy for those children that don't have what they need. So in the case of Patrick Henry, I know that there is supposed to be a social worker that deals with each of these issues. I think that that person can't do everything, and so I think that I would advocate for more social attention, more attention by social workers for these kids that are truly suffering and are unseen or not getting what they need. And I have a feeling that it's not just at Patrick Henry High School, but that throughout Roanoke City Schools, and particularly in underserved areas, there are a lot of kids that are going without, that are, that are not being seen. And so I think that I would put a lot of emphasis on that personally.
Thank you.
Thanks, back to me.
Hi.
Share with us how you would respond when a parent contacts you to complain about a teacher or a principal in one of the schools.
Well, I think I would listen to them. I'm sure that their complaints come from a place of concern for their child, and I can completely empathize with concern for my child, so I would listen. And then I would take their concern, I would tell them, I will take your concern to the superintendent. Now, side note, I don't know if that's actually how it's supposed to work, but I feel like that would be my gut, would say, I will advocate for you, and go to the person that is directly in my charge, and have them reach out to the administration of your child's school. If I were to learn that there's another way to do that better, then I probably would go that route. But it seems to me that advocating, listening and advocating would be the first two big steps for that person's complaint.
Jackie, good to see you.
Good to see you.
What does equity and diversity mean to you? Why is it important to our school division?
Well, when I was at Fleming, and I graduated in 1997, there was, that wasn't really part of the conversation, equity and diversity. We had the IB kids who were white, and we had everybody else. And it stuck out as a, like a sore thumb, and it was not spoken of, but everybody knew that it was split racially. And mostly, and it was socio-economically a lot of times as well. I think that now, witnessing what's happened with my son and his experience at Patrick Henry, from what he tells me and his friends tell me, it's not like that anymore. Anybody can be anybody that they want, anybody can be with anybody they want, they can be friends with whomever they want. And I'm sure it isn't a perfect world, it's not a utopia yet, but I think that it's a lot better. And I think that we can strive to make it even better and make that across the school district, where people expect and receive respect from each other, no matter the color of their skin, how much money they have, their sexual orientation, whatever. I think that everybody, all our students deserve to have the highest quality education, no matter what they look like, what religion they are, or whatever. And I think that we could be just exemplary, we could be a light in the darkness, the way that we treat our students equally, and uphold their individuality and celebrate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Ms. Woods, I have the final question, and that is, what role and relationship should a trustee, which is a member of the school board, develop and maintain with city council?
Oh, well, I think that it should be a very close relationship, because as far as I understand it, the school board answers to city council and probably gets a lot of their direction from city council, and also has, needs to report back about how the school board is progressing and what challenges they have and what needs to be done, and what the agendas in place are. So I think that it should be a very open and fluid conversation. I think that there should be just an open door between both boards, right, to express needs and express direction, like both ways.
Well, thank you, thank you for that. And thank you again for your interest in Roanoke City School Board. Mayor Lee is not here, but he will be watching the videos from all of the interviews when he returns on Wednesday. We have more interviews, we have some later today, and we have some April 17th, and the candidates will be notified after the final interviews on April 17th. So thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for the chance.
When's the public hearing for the school board come, that's also on the 17th?
Seventeenth. So just in case, Ms. Woods, you want, you know, your family, friends, colleagues, or anybody to come down for the public hearing to speak on your behalf, it is April the 17th. And I'm not sure if it is 7:00 PM, yeah, 7:00 PM.
Question, so you said that people can speak on my behalf, so anybody can just show up and have a moment?
On April 17th. And I'm not sure how much time the clerk is going to be giving them that night, but it's normally three to five minutes, but probably, probably three, because there's usually a lot of people.
I will be certain to let them know, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for reminding me. I did remember mayor's announcement, but I forgot that. I had a note for that. So what time is the next one?
It's now.
It's now. It's now.
Yeah.
Good, keep on rolling. Good. Better rolling on in than sitting here waiting.
Sitting there waiting on them.
Yeah, we'll just keep them going. We don't want them waiting. Mm-mm. We got a late start, but that was.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you don't mind, I'm going to put my purse back.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Ms. Cantana?
Cantana, you can call me Liz.
Liz?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, welcome to, and thank you so much for your interest in Roanoke City Schools and Roanoke City School Board. We are going to be asking you a series of questions. Each one of us will take turns asking a question. But before we do that, there may be a pad still on there, if you want a pad. If you want to just share with us a little bit about yourself before we start the interviews?
Sure. Most of you, some of you don't, but the majority of everybody here knows me as Liz. I am currently the youth development supervisor, sir, for Roanoke City Parks and Rec. It's a long title, just to say that I am the supervisor for after-school programs. Obviously, I'm not from here. I am Puerto Rican. I moved here from New York seven years ago. I have an almost 21-year-old son that goes to VCU, and I have a 14-year-old, almost 30, that goes to middle school here, and is close to going to high school. My background is I have a passion for children. In New York, I worked for 17 and a half years for Child Protective Services. I got here, and all I've, every job I've had here has been working for kids. I am currently the vice chair of the board for the city libraries, and I am on the board for the Boys and Girls Club of Southwest Virginia.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I actually will start the first question.
Sure.
What are the different roles and responsibilities of the school board and the superintendent?
Number one is to be equal to every parent and student that attends our schools. We have to be invested and know that the education is the biggest part of a child's development, and instruction, and, and, and ability to go forward and take on the world of sorts.
Thank you.
I get number two.
Welcome, Liz.
Hi.
As you think about working with other school board members and superintendent, how will you build and sustain relationships with other school board members and the superintendent?
Just be myself, be honest, be transparent, be upfront, and most of all, I think showing how much I care for the kids. Stay in contact, send a text, "Hey, good morning. How are you? Happy birthday. How is your child doing?" Little things like that go a long way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying and coming to the interview. Why do you want to serve on the school board?
Number one reason, there's nobody that is Hispanic or from the Latin community and the board. You guys, I know you know, the Hispanic community is growing at amazing rates in Roanoke, and that voice needs to be heard. They need to be, have somebody in not only a little assistant at each school that can translate, but somebody in the board that can transmit what are the worries and, and, and the hardships that Hispanics and immigrants are having in the schools.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your answer so far. I get the longest questions. It's a lot of fun. There's two parts, but it's really just one long question. The taxpayers invest a substantial amount of money in public education. What in your background would help assure them that you have some understanding of budgeting and accounting for such a large investment of public funds? There's more. How do you see your role as a steward of these resources for the educational benefit of our students?
Well, with my current job and every job I've had, unfortunately, I've had to do budgets. And I say unfortunately, because as you all may know, budgeting in a big nonprofit or city agency is very hard. So I have that, I guess, that background of knowing, you know, and trying to stretch the dollar as much as we can, and still providing the quality of education that is needed, and still being able to provide the same education in all schools equally. I think that's what I have. I was like, you know, I've written grants before my jobs, but most of them now, I, on a monthly basis, I do budgets. It's not my forte, I will say, but I know how to stretch a dollar.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your answer.
All right.
Hi, Liz.
Hi.
So what do you see as, as a major challenge in Roanoke City Public Schools? And if you are appointed as a member of the school board, what would you do to address this challenge?
Communication from the schools with the parents. I am thankful and grateful that I am bilingual, and I can speak, and I understand. But many times, I have been asked by schools to help them translate. I don't mind, but there, there has to be a privacy issue there. And let's be honest, not everybody wants a stranger to know their business. So that, I want, I want the kids that go to Fleming, that have, to have the same education, and the same books, and the same curriculum as the ones in PH. I want us to really put and invest in our kids, and show them that they can be great, that this is not it, that they can do and, and achieve so much more, and, and... Oh, I get emotional. I believe it comes, I believe it comes from all of us. I really think, as a society, we've kind of just like, oh, they're kids, they're whatever. But you know what? Everything is affecting the kids. You know, and they need to know that even people in the top, guess what? You listen, you go, like, my biggest argument in both boards that I am a part of is like, go to the libraries, to the other board members, go to the Boys and Girls Club. Go see, see what is the need. I stay in contact with my daughter's school at this point. And you get to see a lot, and you get to see the struggles, and not only the struggles for the students, but for administration and the teachers. And, and I think a school board needs to support not only the students, but the administrations and the teachers. Specifically, the teachers, because they deal with a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Liz, explain how you would respond when a parent contacts you to complain about a teacher or a principal?
You know, you have to understand people and their children. And I'm going to go on a limb here and say the majority of everybody here has children. And you know, we become mama bears and papa bears, and we need to, first thing would be to just calm down the parent, you know, and then find out the story. There's always two sides to a story. So unfortunately, as much as I would like to just take the story I'm given at face value, I cannot. I would have to investigate and ask around. And once they tell me, I would definitely tell them, "Well, let me investigate, let me see what's going on, and I will give you a response in a couple of days."
Thank you.
Problem.
Hi, Liz, I'm your next questioner.
What does equity and diversity mean to you? Why is this important for our school division?
I always say, working around town, and I think I've told you of this, I was like, I am like the example of equity in Roanoke. Not only for Hispanics, but just the LGBT community, African-Americans, single parents, even single parents like myself. We need to be represented. It is possible to have two amazing kids, one kid in college, and be a single mom from the Bronx. It is possible. That needs to be represented. It can be a Hispanic person, it could be, you know, it, it... What matters is your heart, and that you have the love for the work and the children.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
What role and relationship should a trustee develop and maintain with city council?
I try to keep the ones that I'm close to of you guys, just, I guess, close, but respectful, and obviously, I can say that, everybody here can say that I'm pretty transparent any single time they see me. What you see is what you get. Even if I don't like something, I feel you guys have made it that the citizens feel that they can approach you and be open. And that's how I feel. People should just address you guys, or have a relationship, or, or some type of networking experience.
So Liz, Mayor Lee is, is not present with us this afternoon, but he intends to watch the videos on Wednesday of all of the interviews. And there will be a public hearing on April 17th at 7:00 PM. And during that public hearing, your friends, your family, your colleagues, anybody that you want to speak on your behalf can do so at this public hearing on April 17th at 7:00 PM. And they're normally given about three to seven minutes.
Three.
Three to seven. Three to five minutes.
Five.
Yeah, that would be a long night.
I was going to say, I was like, ooh.
Yeah, because probably it will be three minutes. And I, I think it'd be safe to say, and I will just say that from now on, about three minutes, because it's usually quite a few people, so that it would be limited to about three minutes. But the, we will have one more interview today, and two more on April 17th, and then after that, the candidates will be notified.
Awesome.
All right.
Ms. Wood, I just have a question for the city manager and the clerk. Would it be possible to have an interpreter available for that public hearing if people sign up in advance, so if there are people who want to speak in their language, it's their first language, that would someone be able to interpret?
I, I think we could do that. I'll talk to Bob to see if we can get someone from his office, Katie, perhaps, or some...
Yeah, we have somebody here.
With our contract, our language services program, we can, we can definitely make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. It was amazing. Thank you. Y'all have a good one.
You too.
Thank you.
And I'll just start saying three, three minutes. Instead of three to 10, next time, next time it'll be three to 10. You know, that's what I was thinking that's.
You tell them one to three.
I know.
Here. We're five minutes early.
Well, hello, and welcome.
Hello. Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Thank you so much for coming, and, and thank you for your interest in, in Roanoke City Public Schools, and for your interest in Roanoke City School Board.
Yes, ma'am.
And there should be a little pad there, Chris.
There's right here.
Right there. If you, if you need that pad, it's yours. We would like for you just to take just a moment to tell us a little bit about yourself before we get started. And each of us will ask you one question, I will ask two, but everyone else will ask one question, but we want you to, to kind of introduce yourself to us this afternoon.
Okay, okay. My name is Chris Ling. I am what we call in my home county, a come here. I grew up in the Richmond area. I moved to Roanoke when I got married in 2013. My wife, Elizabeth, and my four-year-old daughter, Eleanor, and my dog, Scout, we live in the Raleigh Court neighborhood over behind Woodrow Wilson Middle School. I am a public, or excuse me, I am a product of public schools. I went to Chamberlain Elementary School in Henrico until we moved out to Hanover. I graduated from Patrick Henry High School. I got two degrees from Virginia Tech in engineering, and as I work now as a structural engineer.
May I clarify? That's Patrick Henry.
The other Patrick Henry. The other Patrick Henry.
I was going to say, did you move somewhere? Well, thank you.
I went to the one that has a Patrick Henry house in the district, for what it's worth.
Well, I appreciate Mr. Voluson clarifying that, because I thought we missed a move during your...
There's two Patrick Henrys.
Yeah. Thank you for that. So, and I actually, Chris, have the first question.
Yes, ma'am.
And we will each take a question. What are the different roles and responsibilities of the school board and the superintendent? What are the different roles and responsibilities?
I'm sure I'd have a better answer to this after serving on the school board, if I did.
Yes, you probably will.
But as I understand it, the superintendent actually has his or her hands on the tiller, and the school board provides citizen oversight as, as, as a mechanism to give the citizenry being served by the school board a voice in the operations of the local school board, or excuse me, the local school system. So I understand the superintendent is actually running the schools, and the school board is providing oversight by the citizenry.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Second question is shifts from roles and responsibilities to relationships.
Okay.
So if you're a member of the school board, how would you build and sustain relationships with other school board members and the superintendent?
Well, starting by being easy to work with and being friendly often goes a long way. I, I guess, like building relationships in any other human organization, trying to understand who I'm serving with on the school board, what they're good at, what I'm good at, what I'm bad at, and trying to catch up as quickly as I can. In terms of establishing a relationship with the superintendent, I don't know. I would have to figure that out as I went, but, but I assume it would be a process of being a, 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 a good thoughtful colleague, like most other professional arenas, for lack of, a lack of a better answer. Thank you.
And I have a third question, sir. Why do you want to serve on the school board?
I mean, the first, well, not the first four, but the next 14 years of my life were absolutely dictated by the, the seasons of, of primary schooling. My mom was a public school teacher, my grandmother was a public school teacher, my aunt was a public school teacher, my great-aunt was a public school teacher, my great-grandmother was a school teacher. And I thought it was settled science that a robust school system is in the best interest of advancing society. I have a four-year-old daughter who's getting ready to go to school next year, and I want her to have access, well, two things. I want her to have access to a, a, a educational foundation that'll help her become a lifelong learner. And I, I guess, we could pull her out of the public school system and put her through private schools, and, and she could get that. But I'd, I would rather she go through the public school system, get the education there. I, I think there's some special sauce in people's children from all walks of life and... all walks of life and backgrounds and neighborhoods, learning how to play on the same playground and learning how to get together with one another in the primary schooling environment until they go out into the world where they're going to have to do so as adults. And I guess I just took it for granted that everyone thought that this was settled science until suddenly there seems to be this strain in American thought that the, I don't know, that is anti-public school. And I don't like that. That makes me uncomfortable. I would like my daughter to have the same, same access to a great education that I had.
And you think by serving on the school board, she would get that with you on the school board or without?
I mean, I might fail spectacularly, but then she can blame me. I don't know. The, the paper listed that there were positions coming up, and I thought I would apply.
I'm the next question.
I'm assuming because you started moving around. If it's not you, I'll look at someone else.
Well, thank you for being here, first of all.
Thank you for having me.
My question is rather long and has two parts, but it's all one subject. The taxpayers invest a substantial amount of money in public education. What in your background would help assure them that you have some understanding of budgeting and accounting for such a large investment of public funds? How do you see your role as a steward of these resources for the educational benefit of our students?
That is a good question and a long question. I've certainly never managed a budget or had any part or any contribution to the management of a budget as large as the school board. In my work as an engineer, I'm a project manager. And so from project to project, as we are turning over a deliverable to a client, we've got to make sure that, well, on every single project, we're endeavoring to deliver that project on budget and on schedule and deliver something that the client is ultimately happy with. In my limited time as, as serving on the property committee at my church, I have had some exposure to taking care of an infrastructure that is aging, but we love it, and trying to figure out how to judiciously apply the funds we've got to the squeakiest wheel. And maybe one more thing, in my, I'm, I'm a structural engineer by trade, but I currently work in a group that designs and installs fall protection systems, which is another rabbit hole. But, but we, we are serving as consultants to safety folks. I am not a safety professional, but I serve as a consultant to safety professionals. And my small window into that arena is, is helping them select fall protection systems that will help their facility reduce their exposure to risk. And at that point, it's, it's a statistics problem. Is asking someone to climb up on top of a water tower that's 135 feet tall concerning? Absolutely. And is it scary? Absolutely. And it, and it is worth time to, to figure out a safer way to do it. But if you're only doing it every five years, maybe there, there are some other tasks that we should worry about first that are only happening at 15 feet off the ground, but you're doing them eight times a day. And then, so even if there's this one aspect that is initially concerning, being somewhat thoughtful about how your operations are taking place on a daily basis, it can, can actually illustrate better ways to spend your resources. And the way that swings all the way back around is that every single facility, typically every year, has, has a certain amount of capital spending. You know, in calendar year 2024, we can spend $300,000 to make the plant safer. Mr. Structural Engineering Consultant, what do you think that should be? Well, let's not necessarily just look at the scariest thing, but is there some way that we can maybe take a look at 10 other things on the list and more just judiciously spend the money to maximize the dollars that we have? It's a question that's never been answered, so I don't know how good of an answer.
Thank you. It sounds like we use your help here sometimes, but thank you.
Maybe. We'll find out.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you see as a major challenge in Roanoke City Public Schools? And if you are appointed as a member of the school board, what would you do to address this, this challenge?
I don't think it's specific to the city of Roanoke. I think in most localities and jurisdictions, teachers, like most of us, are overworked and underpaid. And I, and what's amazing to me is that people continue to go into education. And I think it's because they just can't shake an internal, well, I, I choose to believe that it's because they can't shake an internal calling to education and the desire to have a front row seat to the magic of learning. And I'm sure there are lots of other things that I would learn about as, on day one, that are as big of a concern. But I, I, I can't imagine that the school system would not be served by ensuring that teachers are compensated competitively for all the work that they do and ensure that the school system is able to continue to attract good teachers.
Thank you.
All right. So imagine that you're on the school board.
Okay.
And you get a phone call and it's a parent contacting you to complain about a teacher or principal. How would you respond to that?
In the moment, I would try to listen and try to furiously take as many notes as I could and be deferential because they're upset. And all I know at that moment is the parent's side of the story. And collect as, as many specific details as I can about their concern and as many specific names or aspects, and then reach out to the school. If that's my business, it, it, maybe it's most report, maybe it's most appropriate that I go to the superintendent first. And then try, make, first make sure that the, the specific school is aware of the parent's concern, which they may or are probably already aware. And then contribute in whatever way I can to its resolution. But I think the most important thing at first would be to listen and then chase down whatever information I get out of the phone call. Thank you.
All right. What does equity and diversity mean to you? Why is this important for our school division?
That's a much shorter question. That's much heavier than Mr. Priti's. Maybe I'll start with diversity first. Were a diverse nation? Were a diverse city? And why on earth would we not want our institutions to reflect that diversity if the institutions are structured to serve that citizenry? And then to answer equity, as I understand it, every citizen in the city of Roanoke should be served equally by the school system with no regard for race, creed, or any other qualifying adjective. In terms of the, in terms of how that would apply to the school system, in abstract brushstrokes, every pupil in the city of Roanoke deserves access to a good education. And as the Roanoke Times has written about endlessly over the last, well, at least 10 years that I've been reading the Roanoke Times, I didn't read it before I moved here, there, there's, there's certainly a disparity between how kids in deep coalfields of southwest Virginia are served versus the children of Fairfax. And there's lots of contributing factors to that. And certainly one of them is the current stack tech structures we've got and how they're set up to, you know, fund schools and the money that schools get. But I'm guessing you can boil that down in, in a microcosm. I, I'm sure there are some flavors of that that show up in local school districts. And, and, and some of that is something that we've inherited from previous iterations of our society. But right now, we seem to be at a moment in time when we can hopefully do something about it and make sure that all kids in the city of Roanoke are served equally by the city of Roanoke Public Schools. Thank you.
Chris, I have one final question.
Yes, ma'am.
What role and relationship should a trustee, a school board member, develop and maintain with city council?
It is probably a relationship best served by making sure that I am aware to the best of my ability of the operations of the school system and make sure that council is best aware of how their decisions affect the ability as a conduit, to, to make sure the council is aware of how their decisions, one way or the other, will impact the ability of the school system to fulfill its mission.
Thank you for that. As you noticed, Mayor Lee is not here this afternoon, but he will watch all of the, the videos.
Okay.
On Wednesday, when he returns.
Okay.
And there will be a public hearing on April the 17th.
I'm going to use your pad.
Yes, use the pad and the van. On April 17th and, at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
And at that time, your friends, family, colleagues, anybody that you want to come and speak on your behalf can do so that evening. And they will have about three minutes. So just make sure that you're aware of that. And also, we have, you're our last interview for today, but we have two more on April 17th.
Okay.
And after that, the candidates will be notified, one way or the other. And I just want to thank you again for coming down and
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your interest in Roanoke City Public Schools and our school board.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
You all take care.
You too.
There being no further business set forth to come before the council, the council meeting will be declared in recess until Monday, April 10th at 1:00 PM. And the council will engage in a workshop on the city's gun violence prevention framework, which consists of efforts at prevention, intervention, enforcement, and justice. The recessed meeting will take place at Burgland Hall, 710 Williamson Road Northwest. And it is expected that a quorum of the members of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission will be in attendance at the recessed meeting as well. Thank you all. Have a good evening.